At this time, I call to order the work session of the Maricopa County Community College District governing board for September 24th, 2019. The topic of our work session today is to start discussions about the search process for the next chancellor. And I took the liberty of drafting some suggestions to give a boost, a starting point. And probably the first thing that we need to talk about is what will be the makeup of the search committee. And Maricopa has an interesting history when it comes to search committees for the chancellor. The most recent one was made up entirely of representatives of the community with the exception of a representative from the faculty and a representative from the classified staff. Prior to that, when Rufus Glassberg was hired, there was no committee. The board simply conducted an internal search by inviting members of the chancellor's executive council to apply. Only Rufus Glassberg applied. Prior to that, after Paul Delsner left the chancellorship, there was a very large committee, even more extensive than the one that I had drafted here. That search produced, I believe ultimately, two finalists, neither of which were chosen by the board. The board then decided to do its own search, to be its own committee. So that's the recent history of search committees in the Maricopa district. So what I have proposed here is more traditional in higher education, that as the board chair, that I would chair the committee, that Mrs. Nguyen, as the board secretary, would be the vice chair, that it would include three faculty members, one of which, at least one, to be a CTE faculty member. And here I said selected by the FEC, but I want to clarify that I mean the large, and maybe Mr. Shantel can help me put that word in. The large FEC that includes the academic senate presidents and their president-elect and the officers and so on. Is referring to that as FEC correct?
Yes.
Okay. So you're looking confused.
A puzzle, but I could have drafted later if it's all right with you. I just want to make sure I understand that definition.
Yeah, so my intent in suggesting this was not simply that the FEC officers make a selection, but that the larger body that constitutes what I understand to be the FEC.
Okay. If you don't mind me looking at that, would you a little bit better?
Two adjunct faculty members, one academic and one CTE, selected by the adjunct faculty association. And I suppose I should say board?
No.
I think these groups, in my opinion, should pick their own people using whatever process, you know, they want to use, but that's the intent there. And I've been reading the updates coming out of the Employee Group Organizing Council that they're proposing that employees be called non-exempt and exempt. So I picked up their language here, that it'd be three non-exempt otherwise classified employees selected by the Employee Group Organizing Council. And that's a default because we do not yet have the new employee groups. But this is a group that has been, for all intents and purposes, representing the classified staff. Three administrators to include the provost as a direct report who works at the district office, and two college presidents selected by the presidents council, which I believe is chaired by Dr. Taylor. Two students, one academic and one CTE, selected by the Maricopa Student Senate. And then, and I'm definitely open for conversation about this, three community members, one selected by GPEC, one selected by GPL, and one selected by the Maricopa Community Colleges Foundation Board, for a total of eighteen people. So comments, questions, concerns? Yes, Mrs. McGrath.
I'm very concerned, but I have these people hire their boss. I don't like all of these people in the faculty that are employed, which on the community.
So, I mean, this is a very typical hiring committee for a chancellor-level position in community colleges. Personally, I wasn't on the board when the last committee was formed, and I know both of you were. I think it was way too thin on the employees because we basically were having people who don't know the day-to-day job of chancellor making a choice for us. So I personally, I also feel that it's really important that constituency groups have a buy-in and will, you know, from the get-go, be supportive of the new chancellor. And involvement is the way you get there. Mr. Sarn.
We haven't had a discussion as to what we're looking for in a chancellor.
Correct.
So I would say we need to do that before we do this.
I don't know how we can do that. So on the next page, if you want to jump over there, once again, a way to get us started on the conversation, of how we go about collecting input on what we want in the next chancellor. And we do need a search consultant to do that for us.
But that's different from the committee.
I guess I'm not following.
You just brought the search consultant, I had that discussion.
Right.
But the search committee is different than the consultant.
Oh, of course.
So I'm saying we shouldn't have a consultant, but the committee, in my mind, needs to be formed based on what hopefully the board is looking for in their leadership.
So can you give me an example of what would be different on the committee than the more traditional approach?
Well, let's say, and I'm making a supposition to it, we haven't given a case in the end. But if the role of a chancellor in the district of ten presidents and provosts, my feeling is we don't need, well, the president, the chancellor, we need somebody with executive skills and experience to be the CEO of a large institution with eleven people who are experts in the fields of our business.
So assuming that a majority of us agreed with you, how would the committee look different?
Well, it would be more like the last one, I was on the last one, so you know, I would have to, I just think that it's important certainly to have people who know business on this committee, but our business is supporting the community that we serve. So if we do our job well, getting to the point of creating, or if we define what we're looking for, I think sometimes outside the initial level, we'll open-minded and decide to.
Mrs. Nguyen.
I don't know if we have a limit as to how many people we want on the committee, and I hope that we're more concerned about who's not in the committee than numbers. But I do think that we're a little bit light on the community. I think that, I don't know how the committee was structured the last time again, but to only have three members from the community when our committee engagement is such a important part of the function of the chancellor, I think that we're swinging way too far in having too much representation from inside the college and not enough from outside.
So what would you suggest?
I would increase at least to five if not seven.
And how would they contribute?
I haven't.
I like searching, yeah.
Yeah, GPEC, I like who you selected so far. I would maybe look at possibly someone, maybe the Department of Education or the governor's office, some other input that happens in intersection with the community college. I just think there needs to be more community input into this chancellor's competition.
Mrs. Sullivan.
Thank you.
You're here.
Number one, I thank you very much for putting some thought together so we have something to react to, to having to be creative and take the time to do that. You know, I think it's important to having, I think it's important to have proportional representation of interested constituencies for the reasons noted by you, but in reflection, particularly over my learning over this past few years with Report the Red and comments by HCL and others, I think it's important that we do have the representation of those voices and appreciate your breakdown. When it comes to the community members, I would agree with Mrs. Nguyen that it would be important to ensure that we are looking at the community in a different way than just what I was noting here. GPL is certainly top echelon leaders. The foundation board, I think, is critically important, particularly given the presentation we've had recently. When it comes to GPEC then, I'm looking at that economic development, workforce development piece, but there are two, there are a few other entities involved in that. One would certainly be the Arizona Chamber of Commerce, and I know Mr. Hammer is very interested and concerned over how we're examining the impact of the community college system on workforce and economic development. Another one could be, a little Arizona Chamber could be the Greater Phoenix Chamber, which would then bring in to play the more local, regional aspects of economic and workforce development. So that would be another one.
So those are?
Those are two distinct.
Either or.
But I don't know that you would need both, is my comment. Then I was thinking of a philanthropic group, and I thought maybe Steve Stone keeps, of course, part people of mine, a foundation person. But Steve Stone is now with the Arizona Community Foundation, certainly has his pulse on the philanthropic community beyond what most people do. And given that one of their primary interests over time has been a broad spectrum of interest around education, and where I think that might be an additional, so I'd now add to three, which could expand to five. I thought briefly about Helios, but then they're very niche, at which then maybe react, go back to the community foundation where you have a broader scope. So if I was to expand that to five, I would recommend to recruit someone from one of the chambers, and then looking to the community foundation. The one element that I also see could, I don't know if it's missing, but certainly a broader perspective on the whole education movement in the area. And whether that means you identify somebody, again, at the top echelon of your governor's office or subsequent departments, or you look to the HBA, for example, where they understand the function of the boards, they represent, again, a different thinking, that perhaps could be another entity. So I'm more making suggestions, I'm not advocating on any one of those, that would be a spectrum of community interest that would then create a little more balance, to your concerns, Mrs. McGrath, and Mr. Sarn and Mrs. Nguyen's perspective.
Reaction to those suggestions, Dr. Marine?
Yeah, I was thinking, as we're looking at, as we look at the community and we're looking at all the partners, I mean, we're, I think Sullivan alluded to, we've got education as our other partners, high schools and universities. I mean, we're bringing in students from the high school, and we're pushing a lot of them out to the university. And so if we're talking about community partners, I think we can't forget our educational partners. And just one other thing, with the student, and I don't know if this will be an issue or not, of the two students, I know one is academic, one is CTE. Have we given any thought to full-time and part-time, because the issues of full-time and part-time can be a little different, and I know a part-time student probably doesn't have time to, you know.
Okay, reaction both to Tom's suggestion and Marie's suggestion? Mr. Sarn?
I agree with Tom. Last time we had superintendent Mesa Public Schools and Dr. Crowe, so I agree, those are two sides of where we fit.
So if we were, so I found, personally, I found a point on that Dr. Crowe chaired the committee last time.
The committee chose to chair.
Because depending on the day, they're a partner or they're a competitor, and one doesn't normally have, like, your competitor choose your chief executive officer. But what process would you suggest that we use for selecting a superintendent and that a university partner?
Well, from a superintendent, there is a group, superintendent association in.
SMG.
SM, and as far as post-secondary, you know.
Well, and I would, if we're looking at post-secondary and university side, focus maybe on those who are dealing with transfers, you know, as presidents who are with academic affairs or admissions or.
Well, the person that took, he has.
Cheryl Hyman?
Right, Maria was the one that really.
What's interesting about Cheryl is she was the chancellor of the city colleges of Chicago.
Correct. And an early applicant for our chancellor.
The last time, yeah.
But she's got a good young body. But I, and as far as, that was the other suggestion that I'm looking at, I think eighteen is thirty-two many, you gotta get these three together on a very, very good basis.
If we added a higher-ed person and a key-term person, and three more community people would be at twenty-two, which is still.
Pretty cool. Parties are feasible.
As long as they don't each one insist on asking a question during the interview. So you were suggesting Christine Wilkins, who's a good choice also.
Yeah, I mean, she's certainly been a leader. She understands the key principles. She has relationships to that whole context of transformation. And she always is willing to serve and is a thoughtful leader in her own right.
Yeah, she's a good thought leader.
You were quick by also there, Rob.
She's, I think, executive vice president.
Yeah, she, but more than that, you know, she's a woman who really worked up the ladder to attain her own education as the key leader in appreciating the role of community colleges in developing individuals to be, they're best educated. So she has her, certainly her fingers still on the pulse of the broader community. She's non-partisan in the community area, she comes with a lot of different attributes and that.
But you might should have more length of data information from Dr. Crowe.
I appreciate that. I guess the other one could be Latin, but, you know.
Can I ask for clarification? She has some kind of position.
Christine's.
You know, I didn't have to say her title, but she works in the executive office of Dr. Crowe.
She is a vice president, she's a senior or an executive or something, or they're vice president.
She's doing research.
Yeah, yeah. So is there a preference between the Arizona Chamber and the Greater Phoenix Chamber, or what?
Which one?
You know.
Do you like the Phoenix?
The Phoenix, I mean, they're both good, don't get me wrong, Hammer and.
What?
Kind of the both great. I think because it's Maricopa, and the Greater Phoenix Chamber is really just Maricopa, I would not prefer that.
If we were to go that way, I might throw out Jennifer LaGuardia, a little of Todd, no, if we went to the Greater Phoenix Chamber, only because.
No, we're not necessarily saying that who be taught, that we would invite them.
I say to. And then they would select him and what.
Yeah, thank you.
It's the same thing.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so we're saying the Greater Phoenix Chamber and the Arizona Community Foundation.
Yeah, so I was.
Okay. Well, the letters, that we invite you or your.
At a certain echelon of the standing, I think you don't want.
What we rely on is.
Yeah, I definitely. And we'll look for, we'll ask the Arizona School Administrators Association to select a superintendent, hopefully a.
Maricopa community.
Well, yeah, and either a unified or a high school district, yeah.
Could you put the charter schools in that category?
They can be members.
Can they be members?
I mean, they can be members, I'm not saying a lot of the partners, they can be.
Okay, and then. Yes, Mrs. Sullivan.
If we're expanding it, it still looks like the idea would be so Maricopa community college district heavy. I would like to reduce the, every place should have three here, faculty members, non-exempt, I mean, administrative, reduce that to two. Maybe three for each of those chemicals.
Thoughts about that?
I concur. I think it's, we're still really happy on the college picking the chancellor, and I think that's, that can be problematic down the road.
Yeah, I really think.
Or if you're not doing the board, makes the chancellor.
Right, but I think if we brought, I agree with Mrs. McGrath, I think that they should introduce any better strategy.
In any case, they're all going to be representing the groups that they are selected from, so.
It's redundant if they don't.
Well, and I, I'm confident in these groups, they pick the person that does the job of representing their group.
Any other question for clarification? Please. So on three administrators, I would assume the provost would definitely be one, and then you would reduce their college president, is that what I'm understanding?
Correct.
Under three faculty members, if you took that down to two, would then we take the adjunct faculty member down to one?
No, it's just words, three to two, not two to one.
I understand, but I'm just thinking of proportionality of all this. Then we have more adjunct, three to one, than we do all the time back.
You're doing numbers.
They each represent, they would represent, whether it's two of them or one, it's probably better to have four.
So the faculty become one academic and one CTE? Yes, Mr. Henderson.
I'm almost reluctant to say this.
I'm sorry. Excuse me.
I'm almost reluctant to say this in public meetings, but I might agree with Mr. Sarn.
You're clearer than I remember.
That's my comment, I wasn't trying to, I'm looking around the room, there's not many people here. I don't think it's televised. I'll be my, if they print it up. But I'm just, as we're thinking about what group we want.
Yes, you guys are talking into it.
As we're thinking about what group we want, it's not on.
Did you turn it off?
It's on the top.
I'll just.
You're a talker.
Hey, my thought was, as we're trying to think who we want on the search committee, and I'm just making a comment, I'm not making a suggestion, but Mr. Sarn's comment, if we don't know what we're looking for, let's just take two examples, there's probably a lot of other vanity models, but let's say we were looking for someone that came from academia and had a strong education background. We may want more educators to search and interview those people because they know what they're looking for. If we wanted someone with a business background that was going to be a manager, as Mr. Sarn referred to, we have ten presidents now, perhaps we'd want more, what do you call it, junior people, business people. Maybe we should have some special instructions, we want these people to look for, and then look for people that can find those. Really, if you asked me to go interview people and find somebody who was a strong academic, this could be palled up what you're going to get from me. If you want me to go find a business guy, I could probably find a pretty good CEO, but we probably need people to find one for after. I'm not trying to let it hit, but it's all partially.
Dr. Marine, first.
I think we're, I think we're putting the cart a little bit before the horse here.
Should I?
Wouldn't, instead of looking for the type of person that we're looking for, shouldn't we be setting up the goals and outcomes that we're looking for and finding the best person to reach those, instead of saying, this is, you know, this is the kind of person we're looking for, instead of saying, here's what we're looking to accomplish, who's the best person to do that?
Mrs. Sullivan?
I just wanted to ask for clarification. So in the event, so according to your design, if I could, these groupings on the second page would all be asked to give their input, which at some point the board is going to sympathize anyway. So we would have, in order to achieve doing that, prior to putting a committee together, we would have to move on that pretty quickly, which would impact our timeline.
Correct. So typically, and again, we can do things untypically, but typically you hire a search consultant, the search consultant comes in and conducts a series of forums or town halls, and it's often by constituency group, which is what I have suggested here. And typically, the consultant asks three broad questions. What are the, you know, the qualifications and characteristics of the person you're looking for in the next chancellor? And then what are the challenges that the new chancellor will be facing, and what are the opportunities that the new chancellor will be facing? The search consultant, typically, takes all of that information and drafts the position profile. Typically, that position profile first would be reviewed by the committee, and then it is presented to the full board for further editing and adoption as the profile.
Thank you. So my follow-up question to the two gentlemen, I appreciate your comments, you wanted to know what the search committee looks like, blah, blah, blah. But is there a concern or a fear if we went this route, because it seems like last time we were atypical? So we want to follow a different defined pathway, is your recommendation, from what I'm perceiving? So I'm trying to understand the bigger picture, so from you guys, excuse me, that was not professional. From you gentlemen?
Gentlemen one? Gentlemen two? Thing one, thing two, I don't know, however you want to call it.
Dr. Marine's comments are, we do have the outcomes that we've established for protecting that are officially the policy of the board. If you want to expand on that.
to have some discussion as to what did you work to us in terms of the outcomes that this individual will possess, some of the challenges.
So, that the discussion paper that I put in front of you does have the consultant doing this with the full board, so it provides a mechanism for us to, to have that input.
I just want to make sure that the board doesn't overwrite a lot of work that's been hired to give to the board.
So, we could have the consultant do us first?
I would suggest that.
Well, that's almost a jump line.
Well, I...
Yeah, yeah, well, assuming that, uh, the consultant may have to travel here, we want to try to, you know, put things over just a few days.
Depends on day or maybe we want to go there.
But I agree, you know, I'm not saying that we, my, my head and I, but during that process, I think consultant needs to know where the board's coming from, so they can kind of, but the other groups, you know, kind of working and result have to be within that box, or the boxes now, right?
So, uh, with what you're proposing, that if we delay appointing a committee, then the committee will not have a role in the development of the profile?
I don't know.
Because if we have to develop the profile first, then appoint the committee?
No, I think the profiler comes, if the search consultant is in place, meet with us first, and develops that box, that the other individual organizations have to work with it, because it doesn't make any sense, right?
But if I'm understanding that, so, says the board without input is designing, but...
Right.
Well...
I mean, is that what you're saying? I'm just trying to get clarification.
No, I... I, I use the box now, see, I mean, if, if, it has to, the board's going to make the final decision, so, um, and I don't know, they assume that we want to hear what they have to say, so things could change, but if those individuals from the search consultant learn what the board's thinking is, they're not going to be outside that box.
I, I don't want to take any video, but isn't that the challenge to innovation and entrepreneurial thinking, is to get people to help us impact our box?
In the end, that would be hopefully true.
Because I would be very interested in what the community sees as our opportunities and challenges, and what our employees see as our opportunities and challenges. But, I mean, we could have the consultant meet with us first, and then we also become the last, which, when the person has the profile developed, we become the last group that reacts to it, so we could be front and in back, and back end. But I'm not implying to tell the search consultant this is a box. So, I have similar suggestions on the forums. I don't think it's practical for a search consultant to go out and conduct a forum at all ten colleges and so on. So, I was suggesting the full board, uh, that the faculty again be the big faculty executive council, and the adjunct faculty association executive committee. Again, that we have to use the employee group organizing council as representing the non-exempt or the classified staff. We, in my opinion, certainly need input from the chancellor's executive council, the Maricopa student senate, and then for community, I can broaden that to all of the groups that we've talked about there. Additionally, it's quite common to have an online questionnaire or survey that's sent to all employees, so that everyone has an opportunity to provide some input, even if they're not part of a, of a group engaging with the search consultant, and that that would be completed prior to the convening of this group, so that the search consultant has that input going into the, to the process. Reaction, comments, reactions to that?
Uh, in other forums like that, we've televised it, and people outside the room can submit questions, that's been more to supper and that for almost everybody being hired or undermelt.
Those are for, for candidate forums?
Yes.
On here, I'm talking about how to develop the profile, how to get input with profile.
Well, if we're there to...
Who would develop the questions?
Well, they'd probably be the same questions that the search consultant reviews with the groups, typically, what qualifications and characteristics are you looking for, what are opportunities, and what are challenges? Kind of okay here? So, um, this...
Where are we up to now on the number one?
For the committee? Oh, I think we're...
We took up and then we went down to one, two...
Challenge your best.
I know, and twelve, a box, so we'll, we'll let Mrs. Sullivan check.
Well, specifically, you have a hundred community members.
Five.
Okay.
And then two education.
Oh, okay. No, that's fine, somebody else can do it.
Seventeen.
One, two.
Took away three and...
I think we're... Nineteen? So, I'm still unclear, do I extend invitations tomorrow for people to appoint, or are we holding off on this committee until after profile is done?
Could you extend the invitation, leaving a caveat that if we define a profile, that we would have the ability to add?
We can do that.
Up to that number of people?
We can, it's up there.
Right.
Yeah, I meant, but we could...
Maybe up to twenty-two.
Okay, I took stab at a timeline, these dates are all subject to change, but just, just so we all have an understanding of how long it takes to do this, and the fact that we don't have, uh, a lot of, you know, time. Yeah. Because, as I've mentioned before, in the higher education world, the search season, it corresponds with the academic calendar, and so therefore you will see searches starting just prior to the holidays, or right after the holidays, with hiring generally being finished by April, no later than May, but really April, so that if a person has to relocate, they get time to do so and be on board by July one.
Or their contract may expire ninety days or something.
Right, exactly, and also, if we get past that window, people will have already signed a contract for the next year, which would put us in the situation of having a longer term interim, uh, instead of, uh... So, at any rate, so, obviously, I'm starting with today, um, and then I was suggesting that by October seventh, the appointing bodies get us their search committee members, and we haven't got to the search consultants, but you're going to get all of that material shortly. And that we hold a special coordinating on October the fifteenth to select one of these firms, and also to appoint, officially appoint the search commit, again, subject to the ability to add to it at a later date. That, that would give the search consultants a little more than two weeks to know that they've been hired, and, and then we would ask for the input from all employees, have the search consultant come mid-November to conduct the forums, and...
By December?
Yes.
Our board fifteen?
Uh-huh.
We're going to be in January.
Oh, that, that date won't work, like I said, these are...
The fifteen?
These are...
Oh, no, the fifteen first.
Oh, yeah, I'm going to...
Yeah, you're, you won't be here.
Well, we, we can adjust that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was going to plug in a, what about APT? I don't know which date.
That's what you just...
That's right.
Oh, now I'm asking, see, October one, I'm talking about January, January one. So, again, these dates are a sample, I mean...
They'll be going February?
Yeah.
Yeah, these dates.
Yes, these.
Yeah, I just didn't know what...
And you're right, we have a board meeting, okay?
Uh... I don't think so.
It's agenda review.
Oh, it's agenda, perfect, all right, then we still would have to have a special meeting if we're going to take action, add it to agenda review. Um, so then the search consultant would be here basically three days to do the forums and to conduct the orientation and training of the search committee, and get their input on the profile, and then at our regular meeting in November, we review, revise, and approve the chancellor profile, probably in a work session first, whatever. Then we go into the holidays and nothing happens, and we set the target date for applications to be something like January the twenty-fourth, which would allow some weeks after the holidays for people to still get applications in. Assuming we hire a search firm that uses electronic review of applications, the committee would be able immediately then to start reviewing the applications, basically provide two weeks for that to happen, for the search committee then to meet and select those that they wish to interview, probably, you know, eight to twelve, something like that. A couple weeks for people, for the candidates to be notified and make their travel arrangements without having to cost us a fortune by short, short time purchase. The search committee then would have their interviews and would recommend three to five finalists to the board. In March, we would simultaneously have open forums with the candidates, as well as the board would meet with the candidates. It is very common for a full board or representative of the board to go and visit the top candidate's institution, and talk to that person's board, and their direct reports, and students, and everybody. So, assuming that happens in late April, then, uh, late March, then early April, we would be able to select and announce a chancellor, hopefully for that person to report July one. So, like I said, we don't have a lot of wiggle room in here to get all of that done. Comments, concerns? Yes, Mr. Sar?
We don't currently have the job description included.
Correct. So, I did take the liberty of asking, uh, Mr. Hibbs to, well, you want to comment about what you've been, he's working on it already, I'd ask him specifically to reach out to other large multi-college districts and get their job description, as well as pull from the profiles that we've used in, in the past.
And I have been working day and night on this.
Yeah.
Calling my key staff over here in HR to really know how to do these things, and they are already pulling information together from a number of different systems to gather information about compensation and other factors, and plus, we have been putting together information, some of which is up here already, about both consultants that you might pick, as well as some information on prior, um, searches that have been conducted and information that's related to those, so you'll have a fair amount of information to look at already.
Right, and, and, thank you, Mr. Hibbs, because I failed to mention that I did also ask him to do a total compensation study, so that, you know, we know not all of what base salaries, but what additional perks and so on, chancellors are being offered in somewhat, no one's comparable to Maricopa, but some will comparable districts. Mrs. McGraw?
In the past, when we've had these comparisons of salary, they've always thrown in four-year universities, I'm hoping that this is, we will keep it to two-year institutions.
I would agree with that, the expectations, everything are very different from between the universities and the community colleges. So, comments or questions? I mean, this obviously has to be massaged when the search consultant gets, okay, let's charge on. So, um, the... So, the district, uh, established a procurement list for executive search services that went into effect July one of seventeen and remains in effect until June thirtieth of 2021. So, in the notebooks that have just been passed out, you will find the list of the board firms that are on the procurement list, and the materials that they submitted at the time about what process they would use, who some of their clients are, what their fees are. I think it was just over a week ago, that at Mrs. Wynn's suggestion, I asked Mr. Hibbs to reach out to those four firms and get updated information from them, um, on who their current clients are and those kinds of things, and amazingly, we got that done.
Of course, I think we did.
Then, thank you, thank you. Yeah, yeah, it's, it's amazing. Then, in addition, uh, there's been some comments that maybe four firms isn't enough to, uh, select from. Recognizing that it's not practical to put out a new RFP and still say anywhere close to our timeline, because Mr. Hibbs advises me it takes sixty to seventy-five days to do that, he did look at other alternatives for us and identified that, yeah, the Arizona Board of Regents does have a procurement list for executive services that we can piggyback off. So, what's wrapped around the updated proposals is that list, the ABOR list, with the four that are on the district procurement list included. I mean, personally, if we want to pull off of that list, you know, I'd recommend that we not do them all, but, you know, maybe two, three additional ones. Mr. Sar had specifically asked for Greenwood, Asher, and again, Mr. Hibbs amazingly has produced their paperwork that...
Yeah, you did.
Lost them. So, their, we're all... So, their paperwork is included in the addendum that, that you've got?
Really, and I, I looked, I looked at all of them, and they're on their websites and checked the findings out, but this one has worked well in the community college area, and they've put in Joe at Dallas and a few others that are familiar with them.
And again, Mr. Hibbs amazingly has produced their paperwork. So their... So their paperwork is included in the addendum that you've got?
I looked at all of them, and they're on their websites and checked, cleaned out, but this one has worked well in the community college area. They have Penjil at Dallas and a few others that are familiar with them.
So I think that, yes, I was going to say, I think if... If any of the rest of you desire more than the five choices now that are in front of you, review this list and, you know, and let me know. Although I'm of the opinion that the four that are on the procurement list, plus the one that Mr. Sarr has added, are all well-known, very experienced firms.
Which one did you have, I'm sorry?
Greenwood.
Greenwood Asher. Yes, Mrs. McGrath?
We operate funds from Maricopa County taxpayers. And I believe in buying local. Strongly agree with hiring the CPT's firm because she's local and...
Well, you are going to be given the opportunity to make the case for her when we meet on October 15th.
If you're just a local, the Duffy Group has that experience. They're local.
Would you like them added?
Sure.
Okay, so again, we don't want... We don't want this list to get out of control. Although, remember, yeah, we need to do a national search. Okay, so your homework... We broke all of them. So your homework is to read all of those materials and come to the table on October the 15th to reach consensus as to what firm we want to...
At what point do we advertise that we're...
Why are you doing this while we're still in the meeting?
They're not working. Well, they were all working a while ago. Soon, as soon as the profile is finalized, then we can advertise.
I guess critical. I mean, it's out there already, but...
Yeah, and depending on the firm... Depending on the firm that we hire, I mean, some will put on their own website, coming. So that people who are looking know that this opportunity is going to be open shortly.
You're going to be asked a lot of questions in San Francisco.
Oh, yeah.
So what do we reply and use and what?
About what?
We're developing a job description.
We're going to be asked...
Well, as of, by the time we get to San Francisco, we will have chosen a search consultant.
That's fully covered, is that...
Correct. So that's all that I had. Are there other things we need to... Okay, so the bound is the original materials that they submitted to get on the procurement list. And it was submitted back in 2016. So the addendum is updated information plus Greenwood Asher.
Are the fees that they charged included in this?
Yes. And most of them, because they were submitted in 2016, provide for some kind of escalation over the years. It may be, since I haven't had a hopped agenda with that yet, since I just asked for it two days ago.
Now, why Mr. Hibbs didn't have hardly...
I had my feet up until yesterday. And I was able to call people to go...
Right now, he's not going to open email from me that comes in. Okay, so we're good? So I will proceed to extend the invitations to groups tomorrow then?
In terms of what Mr. Hibbs and Seth come up with for a job description, do we know where that point is in the schedule?
Well, I mean, he's got a draft already. I suspect we may be able to put it in on the October, the October 15th discussion. So I'll add that in context to you. Anything else? Not thank you all very much, this adjourns the work session. We will immediately convene executive session in the legal conference room.